Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for December 10th. And we are gathered or we are convened on the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. We have an agenda to adopt. May could I have somebody move the adoption of the agenda before us? Counselor French, Counselor Stoner seconds. And the whole in favor? Thank you. First item is a report from the Squamish Arts Council. And we have two representatives from the Arts Council. If you could introduce yourselves, please.
I'm going to introduce them.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Sarah Dicker. I'm the Acting Manager of Arts and Culture for the District of Squamish. And today we have with us the Arts Council. We have Amy Liebenberg, who's the Executive Director. And we also have two members of their board. Silka's at the table and Kat is in the audience. And today they're going to be giving us an update on 2019 and how they utilize their partnership agreement funding from Council in order to provide arts experiences for the community. And we're excited to hear about their aspirations going forward into 2020. So I'll have to overtake you.
Yes, thank you very much for having us. So I sent you guys a pretty much a novel. But it's very condensed down in the presentation. So if you wanted to refer to something that's in the report that you were sent earlier, just let me know. And yeah, so this is going to be an overview of 2019. But because this is a new council, there is a little bit of historical data put in in a few different spots as well, just so you know why you see 2017 and 2018 occasionally. So the, we're just going to go through some of our programming. Youth at Art is one of our biggest programs. We based a lot of our programming decisions and vision on the Youth Engagement Strategy Report Card that was recently issued. And we're very excited about the new strategy. And we're going to be looking at that as we move forward. This past year, we continued with a lot of programming that has already seen some success. So scholarships. We also had some camps that we ran. So the scholarships were run by other businesses. We'll get into that in a second. Then we also hosted some. We also funded Squamish Nation Youth Art Camp. And I'm going to go into the SAC Youth Camps that we ran. Brand new this year in 2019 was a film series. So this was in response to the Youth Engagement Strategy Report Card. There were a couple of things that the youth themselves had identified. For example, a desire for a movie theater. We didn't build them a movie theater, but we did provide some film experiences in a few different spots in Squamish. So we had actually an all indigenous evening of films with a panel at the Adventure Center. And that's where we had our youth premiere. That's where that photo is from. So the kids made some really adorable films. You can check it out on our Facebook page or on YouTube. We also showcased a film about youth homelessness. And we did that at the Youth Center, which was really cool because it was about skateboarding. So we had the skateboard right behind us and Counselor Pedengill was there, which was great. And then we had one film also at The Common. And that was curated by a Quest University professor. So the filmmaking camp, that was new. We hope to continue to do that. That was a really fabulous experience. Film is such a booming industry. And it's a very interesting sector. And so this was a really cool way for kids to see how it all happens behind the screen. You know, there's so many film professionals living in Squamish. So this was a really fun experience for them. We have also been doing mural camps for the past few years. So we continue to do public art mural camp. One of them was at the Cloud Burst Cafe. And then new to us was a mural at Totem Hall. The kids were able to learn how to design a mural and how to use different techniques of paint or spray paint and how to work together collaboratively to create a piece of public art, which is very cool. Amped in the Park. As you all probably know, this was started by volunteers. One of them is Counselor Pedengill here. So it's eight nights, July and August, Thursday evenings. Stand, sorry, Junction Park is animated through emerging artists who take to the stage. A lot of them are doing it for the very first time. They're generally youth and the program is actually run by volunteers as well. Mentors and mentees learning how to create a show through sound and stage management. This is one of our favorite programs and it's definitely growing in terms of its volunteer base and its offerings to the community and also the partnerships that it's creating with local businesses and nonprofits as well. The scholarships is a program that we intend to continue as well. This is a very successful program. So I just wanted to read this quote here. I thought this was really interesting. "Arts have been shown to empower youth, especially at-risk youth, to succeed in school and work and in later life. Canadians are progressant of the role of arts education. Eighty-five percent believe that arts education assists in the emotional and intellectual development of children and consider it a good reason to support the arts." So we partner with some amazing businesses who are doing great work with youth art programs. So for example, we've got the Squamish Academy of Music, Squamish Dance Center, and Happiness. And we've got some sponsors who are helping to make this possible as well. Black Tusk Grill is one of them. And funding from some of our youth program grants as well goes into the scholarships. Then we've got the Wind Festival. So this is our flagship festival. It's the largest free arts festival in Squamish. It's hosted over three different, three days. And we see roughly four to five thousand people generally at this event. It's a great employment opportunity for artists, both performing and visual artisans. We have a lot of community partners in this particular program. And it's also, we see most of our volunteerism happen through Wind Festival. It's a really fun and exciting opportunity for volunteers. So here's a breakdown. So Thursday, we have a special Amped in the Park that kicks off the series. Then Friday, we have a Movie Under the Stars. And then on Saturday is a full day of performing and visual art. We have buskers. I'm not sure if you were able to attend this, but it was wonderful. New this year is our Random Acts of Art. This was really fun. This was designed by a previous summer student and our previous ED. It was a marketing initiative and it saw some pop-up performances happen. We had them at the top of the gondola. We had them in parks. They were really fun. One of the, my favorite projects from this marketing initiative was the community weaving project. This was led by Soasia. And this particular piece of weaving was taken throughout the community. So it really was woven by the hands of the community. And then there was a live art painting performance and little canvases distributed. So it was a fun marketing project and this was completely run by our summer students as well. So it was a great opportunity for them to practice project management. The Art Walk is our, the festival that we hold the latest in the year. It's our Art and Culture Crawl. And it gives artists the opportunity to show their work either in a new space or the opportunity to show their work if they don't ordinarily display their art. And it also gives businesses more traffic because people are coming with maps to check out these different shows. This year, for the first time, we hosted the Anonymous Art Show, which was a lot of fun. It's been a very successful art event in Whistler and in North Vancouver. And a lot of people said to me that this was the first time that they'd made art in many, many years because it was so low barrier and it was really, really fun. So we're going to be continuing with that. So in the past few years, we've had summer student jobs. This year, we were able to have three. In previous years, we've had two. So we had three full-time summer students, which was great. All funded by grants. And what it did was it was able to connect the demographic that doesn't ordinarily work with us very, very intrinsically into the work. And it gave the students a really good opportunity to learn all sorts of skills that, of course, they will be able to take into their future careers. And definitely we saw that it strengthened the outreach in the community as well. The Community Arts and Culture Enhancement Grant is what we call the Community Enhancement Grant. We receive that from the district. And so we award local arts groups funding for their projects. So this year, the funding went to Between Shifts Theater, to the Chekma Center, to the Hauson Performing Arts Association, Squamish Farmers Market, Squamish Minor Hockey, and the Squamish Montessori School. And our theme for this year was community. So applicants had to demonstrate how they were interpreting the theme of community in their grant applications. And actually, that theme was something that we really carry throughout our program and operations as well. So here is some more information about the community partnership that we have with the District of Squamish. So all of this work is made possible because we have a strong partnership. Our goal is to help Council meet your strategic priorities during term, to execute on priorities and goals articulated in the OCP, to create a stronger, more resilient arts sector and to grow together toward a common goal and vision. And then here's a little bit of historical data, just a bit of a breakdown on previous funding that we've managed. So in 2017, the Sound Project became gear for Amped in the Park, which is now a long-running and successful program. In your packages, there's a bit of a breakdown on the report for the Discover Your Creative Site, which was a fee-for-service for creating arts programming. And then the Community Arts and Culture Enhancement Grant, which you see in all three years. And then 2018 and 2019 are the same with the Community Arts and Culture Enhancement Grant and then the Community Partnership. This is the external funding invested into Squamish by SAC. These are grants that we have been successful with. Youth, Wind, Art Walk. This is money that we put into the community. So, and a lot of this goes into Squamish businesses and pays artists to run a lot of this programming as well. So whether through community markets, art sales, creating jobs for artists, or highlighting local businesses by supporting the arts, we can contribute. So art matters and community matters. People really do care about arts and it shows in our community. It showed in the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy. There's really high engagement and people are excited about art and culture in Squamish and heritage as well. So what's next for the Arts Council? So we continue, we plan to continue to provide great programming by further examining the needs of our community and leveraging various types of funding. And new to us as well, we're very excited about the new Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy and to take a look at some of the themes and explore that within our own work as well. We are going to be enhancing our capacity as an organization and strengthening the systems before we take a look at what's next. We're going to be doing a lot of strategic planning, continuing that work, looking forward, and working with our community partners like the district. And yeah, that is my condensed version of the presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions and comments, Council?
So I think your building is kind of each and end of its lifecycle. Do you have any plans for the future space?
Um, do you want to speak to this? I think one of the outcomes of the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy that we will see some opportunities in that area develop.
Do you have an answer, yes?
Yeah, we're working on it. There's nothing finalized yet.
When does that, when does that do?
Yeah, group chair, we're working on the first draft of the, of the strategy right now. And we've got a council date of January 28th to present.
I have a couple of questions, but I'll let Counselor French, please go ahead.
The Arts Council website lists Haley Lorraine as the chair. Is that, that's current? That is?
Correct.
So the two folks that are here with you, I don't see them.
No, they are brand spanking new. Yeah. So new that we haven't even gotten around to put them on the side.
You've highlighted there's the $20,000 were allocated to six projects. And I wondered how many applicants you had under that program? And what this may mean for perhaps recommendations and thoughts for the future as to how we structure and arrange that program?
Great question. I don't know off the top of my head, but I think it was around 11.
11.
And so we have two different streams for that program. So we have organizations and groups, so artist groups or nonprofits. And we also have individuals if somebody wanted to explore their idea as an artist. We didn't really have too many applicants in that realm, but it is open to artists as well.
And when you discussed enhancing capacity, I wondered about recruiting volunteers. Has this been an issue for some of your events and projects? It was a topic discussed and some of you were in attendance at the Heritage Workshop a few weeks ago where the topic of recruiting volunteers came up. Is it an issue for Arts Council and your member organizations?
Not really. We find that people are really supportive of the work that we're doing. They're supportive of art and culture. People really do connect to the things that we're doing. We have a very full board right now, so people are very excited about, about what's going on. Yeah, to date, we've, we've not really had too much trouble in gathering volunteers, but I know that it is a theme that's been coming up throughout those, those meetings. And it is interesting.
Mary Elliot?
Given your participation in the youth strategy and wanting to use that as a guiding document, and we know there's youth that are looking for activities that are not focused on athletics first. Where do you see the opportunities for growth? Is it through our partnership or through your own programs?
I'd say both. One thing that, you know, in talking about like our capacity, for example, when we have extra hands on deck is in the summer. But what I would like to see is youth programming and youth engagement that happens throughout the whole year. Summer can just be such a busy time for everybody with vacations and I would love to see more arts happening within schools and in after-school programs as well. And I'd love to get more feedback from youth specifically. We actually have a high school student who's sitting on our board right now, which is really exciting. He can't be here because he's in school, I hope. Yeah, so at this point, we are working on, we're building on what we, we can see is working within the community. But then we are also going to be looking to that strategy for, you know, advice and potential opportunities moving forward. But definitely both.
I have another question. You've very conveniently packaged all of the district policies relating to arts and culture in your presentation here, including the OCP. And there's several references in here to highlighting the downtown as the precinct for arts and culture activities. I just was curious as to how the downtown is addressed in your own strategic plan and in your own mandate and mission statement? Is it? It used to be, but there's been changes to these documents over the years?
Well, I mean, yes, definitely. We're starting to look toward neighborhoods as well as a, as a highlight and how art happens in multiple spaces. Because we are currently situated downtown and there is a lot of, you know, there's a lot of happenings. There's a lot of people moving around that space. We have, I think, traditionally kind of focused the work there. For example, the Wind Festival. The Art Walk happens in businesses, not just in downtown, but that's, you know, a big condensed area for sure. And then our youth programming, for sure, a lot of it happens downtown. But we are excited to start exploring outwards as well.
Thank you. Counselor French?
Counselor raises questions about your future beyond the current building. It got me kind of thinking. What are your office space needs? Like would working space for one be sufficient? Or is it more like working space for three?
As of right now, one. But come our summertime, when we have summer students, you know, three to four people would be great, for sure. A volunteer hub is also important to us when we program at Junction Park as well, which is why it's nice to have presence in that park for our gear storage and whatnot. But for, for office space specifically, three, four people would be nice.
And I'm guessing downtown would be your ideal location. Could you function if you were like running park area, care for the estates?
I think so. Yeah, I think so.
Counselor Stoner?
Thank you for the presentation and the update and all work that's been going on over the past year. Still a little bit of a random question, but on one of your budget slides for 2017, you said that there was $10,000 that went into sound equipment. And we just went through the Community Enhancement Grants. And there was a request from the Figure Skating Club for X, for us, for the Community Enhancement Grant to purchase sound equipment for them. And I'm curious if you rent and/or share your sound equipment with other community organizations?
We absolutely do, yeah. Our equipment really does get out and about. And yeah, if you want to pass along their contact details, we can, we can work on that
Counselor Pedengill?
Yeah, I'll just sort of, I don't really have a question, but just going through your presentation brought back a lot of fun memories and just glad to see the continued success. There's a big smile on my face going through the presentation. Thank you.
I took particular interest in your report on the filmmaking camp. And I wondered, a few years ago, when I was an Arts Council Director, there was an effort to organize the local people that are affiliated with film industry because as you've mentioned, there are quite a few. I wondered if there's any update on that prospect and how you recruit people to assist your filmmaking camp as just ad hoc, recognizing certain volunteers that come forward that have experience in the industry? Or what is the status of assessing that sector and its potential for further contributions?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's a super exciting program for us. It was just so much fun. This year, we hired a film company called Young Movie Makers and they supply all the equipment. Film is very equipment-heavy. I mean, I know that you can pretty much create and edit and display a film right from your iPhone and maybe that'll be future programming, but it's, yeah, it's more intensive than paint and paper. So that company was great because they supplied absolutely everything. But I really enjoyed the Industry Innovation Meeting recently where we connected with a whole bunch of different film players in the game. And so I definitely got some contacts of some of the local filmmakers there. And we are looking at how we can bring them on to create a varied film exploration. So whether it's, you know, sports or art or, you know, what, what youth are actually interested in creating and capturing on film and, you know, what's their interest with film and how can we provide access so that it's not, you know, we need this massive production company. How can we give them access to these tools on an ongoing basis? So this year being our pilot program for the film camp, we're very excited to continue exploring it and to, to work with the local filmmakers. There are many.
I do have an additional question. There are a number of organizations that use the Arts Council present facilities for meeting space. I wonder if you could advise us as to how many and what type of groups? Because presumably, over time, we're going to have to find some other solutions for that meeting space.
It's just a couple, actually. The Forest Re Society occasionally. And then we do get requests. You know, there's a women's nonprofit that is potentially going to be hosting, you know, sort of like a retreat for, for a couple of people there. But it's, it's not extensively used.
Trail Society still using it perhaps? Not any longer. I see. Well, unless there are any other questions, thank you very much for your presentation. And you, it's quite obvious that your relationships to Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy, very broadly defined, are going to be diverse. And we look forward to your impact on that strategy and your ongoing contributions to it. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Thank you. Chair.
I have to leave my coffee, guys.
The next item we have on our agenda is a report from the Capital Projects Manager on the Valley Cliff Park Drive Fire Hall project.
Chair, we're 20 minutes ahead of schedule. So we may just need to recess for a few minutes to gather the folks.
Very good. Yep. Welcome back to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for December 10th. I'm Counselor Anderson. And what we have in front of us is a delegation from the Protective Services and Engineering to report on the Valley Cliff Park Drive Fire Hall project. Please introduce yourselves and take away.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Jesse Morwood. I'm the Capital Projects Manager for the district. Today, as you said, we're presenting on the Valley Cliff Fire Hall scope as well as providing a project update. There's a big group of us today. These are subject matter experts and I think it'd be really useful to hear from them today. Introducing from my left is Aaron Foote, Deputy Fire Chief. Megan Latimer, Emergency Program Coordinator. On my right is Stuart Rothney, Principal Architect for H CMA, our Design Architects, as well as Rebecca Holt, Sustainability Director, thank you, from H CMA as well. So our recommendation to Council today is that the Service Squamish endorse the Valley Cliff Fire Hall Placement Project design direction and general scope, as well as to provide us direction with respect to the expected level of building sustainability performance. So how we're breaking the presentation up today is I'm going to be speaking to the Council Decision Point as well as the project government, governance. Stuart's going to be presenting on the design approach and kind of how we've got to this point today. As well, you can hear from fire and E O C space requirements. Lastly, the sustainability building options will be done by Rebecca. So I just briefly want to touch upon the project cost estimate. We are coming back to Council on January 14th and we're going to be providing much more, sorry, a detailed cost estimate at that point. I do want to kind of point out though that we are anticipating it to be higher than the original forecast. We're still working on all these details right now, based on the concept designs that we're presenting today. We are, again, doing a lot more detail and that includes hiring a quantity surveyor to do a parallel budget estimate. This is in part because it's a really large financial project and it's kind of a gut check on our numbers to make sure that we're doing, we're including everything and not overestimating at all. So as I said, we'll be back on January the 14th to provide the numbers to Council. Sorry, and the last comment I'd like to add is that any kind of the scope discussions today we have Council, if there's anything that Council wants us to potentially cost estimate between now and January, this is a really great opportunity to bring it up. So as I mentioned, obviously, we're looking for Council input during this process. Today, we're talking scope, January 14th, budget, project budget, as well as scope, obviously. As well, later in quarter one, quarter two, we'll come to Council for a development permit approval. And then certainly through this process, there's going to be tender approvals and potential scope changes. So we'll become to Council as required during that time. Quickly, on project governance, there's a fair number of us involved in this project. Gary Buxton is our project sponsor. Aaron and I are project managers on this. We're kind of co-leaders on this project. We're really sharing the workload and how we do this. Aaron's been kind of really digging into the space requirements and the kind of the building layout where I've kind of had more of an administrative organizational role. But there really is a really strong, large support staff that we're leaning on. You know, internal senior, senior managers, as well as a lot of subject matter experts within the district. Externally, H CMA, as I mentioned, are Design Architects as law, as well as with their sub-con consultant team. And then we've also hired Kinetic Construction for our construction management firm. And they're also the company that's, one of the companies rather, that's working on our cost estimate right now. I would like to, Stuart, who's going to talk about our design project.
Which one is?
Yeah.
This one? This one?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to just walk you through four key areas. We're going to talk a little bit about the temporary fire hall and then the site itself and some of the constraints that we're working with there. Just suggest to you how we've initially developed the test fit and the concept design. And the space program will be the space program will be given some detail by Aaron and Megan. So this site plan, I'm sure you're very familiar with the site, but this was the concept that was originally developed prior to our arrival. It demonstrates a location for the new building in red. And at the front of the site, you'll see that there is some orange boxes there, which shows an indication initially of where the temporary hall would go to maintain operations while we build the new hall. For various reasons, we've had to reexamine that temporary hall in terms of its location and need. And one of the first constraints we very clearly identified was in relation to the hydro right-of-way that crosses the site. You can see there that the high-tension lines cross diagonally, and there is an established right-of-way that goes with that. And as a result, we are unable to place a building under that right-of-way, even if it's temporary in nature. Very in mind that the temporary hall will probably be there for at least two years. And that in addition to that, the footprint of the hall, the new hall that was anticipated, partially sits under that right-of-way. So clearly, we had to address that issue. And by some quirk of legal parcels in that area, there are actually two separate independent legal parcels that cross the site at the entry point of the fire hall. They are constrained in the sense that we would not be permitted to put building onto those legal lots. They're literally someone else's property. Although there is a right of access across those properties for the fire hall, we couldn't put the temporary hall there. And the other thing to recognize is as we developed and had discussions with the fire department around the specific needs, we refined those needs and identified what we would require as a minimum requirement to maintain operations. And that actually increased the amount of area that was suggested on the original report to something slightly larger. You can see here on this diagram that the approximate size of the temporary vehicle bays and the support structures are slightly more. So as a result of all of those things, we had to look at an alternative location. And the intention here is to move it slightly further north onto a property that's currently just on the edges of the hospital. The primary focus of any hall is around its response time and the desire to put the hall in a location where it would still adequately support the response needs of the community. So it had to be relatively close, and this seemed to be the best opportunity. So we're going through a number of negotiations, not only with the Health Authority, but the, there's also hydro implications on that site, both of which are actually moving forward to a point where we feel that this is actually a successful solution. And here is a blow-up of that site. You can see it's a triangular site on the end of the Health Authority land, and the two purple areas are temporary fire truck bays. They're essentially like tent structures that are provided to support the vehicles and some operational functions. And then the larger orange rectangle is the suppression needs to support the ongoing operations of the hall, and then there are other needs around parking that is associated with that. So that suggests to you how that layout could work, and we're working through the detail on that. The fire hall itself, this is the current site. It has, the existing hall is the large rectangle in the middle. The large area at the back is the training facility, and one of the desires is to maintain access to training, to allow that to continue even during the construction. And the other thing to notice is there's a considerable amount of change of topography across the site, and as a result, we're trying to limit the amount of effort that we need to cut into those slopes. As a result, the area that you're left is largely the flat area available to put the building. One of the reasons we're looking at that is the original design assumed that we would remove some of that sloped area in order to increase the amount of footprint for the building. That resulted in some retaining walls that were in excess of four to five meters in height, and there's a significant cost to that. So the benefit of us trying to limit the extent of the construction site to the flat area essentially saves us significant money. So as an initial limit, we're starting to encroach, and this becomes the available site. If we then eliminate the legal lots that are at the top of the site at the point of access, that then simply reduces the available site area further. And as we move and we take out the transmission line limitations, that also cuts our site down. That limits our area to this. And then obviously, we have to retain some of the existing fire training props that are at the back of the site there. There's a number of large-scale props that are used for fire training, and we don't want to consider moving those because that in itself would be a significant cost. So let's assume, then, that we cannot move into the back area of the site. You can see that the amount of the site area is being reduced. And then the other desire is to change the fundamental operation of a hall from a situation where the vehicles are backed into the hall to a through hall. What that means is that the fire trucks on return from a response drive around the back of the hall and go into the bay at the back, and then exit out the front when they're responding to a call. That's a fundamental principle of design of modern fire halls and is certainly one we want to replicate here. But that requires a certain amount of maneuvering space at the back of the hall for that vehicle turning, and that's represented by that yellow area there. And so that further limits the amount of available space for the building. So we're getting close to having a little bit of area left. So having put those constraints on us, we go in a little closer. I just wanted to explain that I've rotated the plan here. So the entry point is on your left, the training yard is on your right, the white area is the available area that we could place this building. You'll also notice the two yellow lines represent the bottom of the bank to the up slope and the top of the bank as it drops away to the highway. And we have to, as a part of the constraints of the project, maintain vehicle access past the construction site to get access to training. So the area between the top of bank and the white area allows us to do that. There will have to be a certain amount of phasing, but that's something that will resolve through the detailed development of the design. So we've been working very closely with Megan and Aaron to try and define the specific needs of the hall, and they'll talk about that in a second. What that derived is a series of fundamental functional needs, and these colored blocks here represent how those fundamental programming needs are arranged on the site, given all the constraints that we're trying to work with. The underlying story here is that there is certainly room to accommodate the needs of the hall, even given the constraints that I've described. It would almost certainly be a two-story structure. The apparatus base where the vehicles are generally about a story and a half, and then the balance of the building would have to be two stories to accommodate the need. And we're working through a number of variations on that to get the functional demands right. There are also some requirements for surface parking. You'll see that just above the words "ground" level there, there's a series of parking areas that we are anticipating adding. That is to support access for volunteers who drive to the building in response. And then there are some, certainly some parking needs associated with the general operations. All the high-value vehicles are generally inside within the apparatus base or undercover. Again, this shows you the second level, there are accommodations for administration in the E O C and some suppression functions on either side of the apparatus base. There's also a demand for a training tower associated with the building, which also provides drying space for the hoses. And ultimately, up above, there are some additional mechanical, electrical requirements. Again, all of this is at a very conceptual level at the moment, and we need to work through the detail. So if I was to cut a cross-section through the site, the highway is essentially on the right of that diagram, and the up slope side is towards the mountain. And the building essentially is a two-story structure. Because of the ability to position the building on the site, we've limited the amount of cut-and-fill that we have to do into those existing slopes, and that has had a significant benefit on our cost. And as a result, we are revising a lot of our site development costs, and you'll get that presented in January. Again, these yellow areas are where that cut-and-fill is. On the original concept, there was a significantly more work related to achieving the amount of cut-and-fill on the site, so by reducing that has been a huge benefit. And that leads us to the space program. Just by introduction to that, we were, we've done an extensive amount of work, both with the fire department and the emergency response group, to identify needs, specific needs that require a certain amount of area. And as a result, we spent a lot of time developing a program. It was compared to the original Tantalus Fire Hall Needs Assessment, which was done previously. The thing to note here is that although there is an increase in area between the original retrofit option and the new build option, there's an increase of about 790 square feet, we've been able to accommodate some efficiencies in the building that have actually allowed us to incorporate some new elements that were not assumed to be in the project previously. So the obvious ones are the hose training tower, for example, and so we've made so more accommodations to some future need that might be in the building. Also, in our experience, the gross-up, which is in fact all the additional space you need to make the building function, from stairs to corridors, all of those additional needs, in our experience is typically more at 30%. The original assumption was 25. So given all of those increases and the increase in gross area, the fact that we've been able to contain the overall area to 18,760, I think, is a reflection of the two groups wanting to be really clear about generating efficiency and benefits without overbuilding this project. And as a result, we generated a program area summary. We haven't, I'm not going to go through it in detail, but we've literally established every single room in this building and monitored that through the fire department, through E O C. And there is a great deal of sharing of use. Aaron and Megan will talk about that in a second. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Aaron.
Great. Thanks for having me. So I'll cover off a bit of the design considerations for the build. Combining the fire hall and E O C provides for a better utilization of space, where the spaces can be shared for training and operations. And moving the E O C to a post-disaster building out of the floodplain really builds on the resilience for the community. It made a lot of sense. As you know, the fire department works off of a composite staffing model. It provides substantial savings to the District Squamish using that type of model, but it does increase the complexity of the space orientation and adjacencies, so basically the room orientation in the building and the sizes of the spaces. The spaces have to be flexible to accommodate these fluctuations in response levels and training levels as our responses increase and decrease depending on the amount of people that turn up to the calls. We also considered keeping the spaces very flexible, designing the rooms to be multipurpose and be able to easily transition one purpose to another while maintaining a high level of function. The headquarters, we're obviously moving to the downtown area by moving it from number two hall to number one hall. And this will enable the department to better serve the areas of increased density. The downtown core will see the highest density compared with other neighborhoods in Squamish, so it made sense to transition to the downtown area. Maintaining the use of the Fire Hall one training facility was key, a key consideration in this build. It did throw some phasing considerations in there as well, so we can transfer the, or have the construction move along but still have the road operational for our use. And future-proofing was another design consideration. They have to be adaptable and easily modified when the department needs how to change how they function. We've included an office space as an example for an additional administrative staff member, and before that person is hired on, we would be using that as an E O C breakup. So it has dual functions. And also provisions for additional dorm rooms can easily be added in the future when the need arise. Just moving on to the fire hall spaces, one of the things Stuart touched on was the drive-through bays. It's kind of the industry standard now to put drive-through bays in where the site allows it to. It makes the movement of the apparatus a lot more safe for our members. Backing into bays will try and lock up the exhaust system, and the back tire is not a good option, not a safe options. We go on to fitness. Fitness is a large component of firefighting. It's the second leading cause of firefighter fatalities, it's heart disease. Heart disease is due to stress and overexertion combined with adrenaline at calls. A fitness room is, combined with a building, a culture around fitness is paramount in combating heart disease in the fire service. And it also benefits mental health, wellness, and resilience amongst firefighters. Squamish offers unique challenges for firefighters, where being fit is just a starting point. We often respond to incidents that require a higher level of physical preparedness, such as remote natures, the remote nature of trail rescues with foreign incidents, and some of the wildland fires and really difficult terrain. We've also included dorm rooms for the fire hall because we operate occasionally on a 24-hour basis for a number of the large incidents, such as the dock fire. Providing a small room for rescue and recovery is essential to allowing the fire hall to operate safely. In the future, the hall will be staffed around the clock, and rooms will be required for the day-to-day operations of the department. We've included a kitchen and multipurpose room. These rooms will be adjacent to each other, permitting the space to be more flexible. Fire department occupant loads could go from eight to 50-plus, and the space will be able to open up into other spaces so you can adapt, depending on the occupant level. The kitchen's used by the members during their shifts, so they work 12-hour shifts every day, seven days a week, for meals, and also by paid-on-call members after incidents and training sessions. So these combined spaces play a large role in retaining our paid-on-call firefighters and camaraderie amongst all the members. During the E O C activation, these spaces will play a vital role in rescue and recovery space for the E O C team members as well. We're also proposing a small meeting room, the purpose-built for meetings, and it would function daily for both the fire department and emergency program meetings, and also used as a breakout room for the E O C policy group or the E O C command staff. This meeting room could also be booked by internal or external group for meetings when it's not in use. And lastly, decontamination spaces. Modern design standards for fire halls include spaces for decontamination of firefighters and equipment to reduce exposure to cancer, which is the leading cause of firefighter fatalities. Firefighters would return from incidents and decontaminate gear, apparatus, and equipment prior to showering and going through infrared detox wear before transitioning through the apparatus, or sorry, the administration or the clean side of the building. So this design concept is basically splitting the building into two, so you have a clean side and a, we'll say, dirty side, which will be clean as well. And then also using washable, hard-finished materials has advantage of being easily cleaned after incidents, and it lessens the chances of secondhand exposures through dust moving around the rooms. So I hope this helps to clarify some of the spaces, and I'm open for questions at the end if you'd still have any. Thank you.
And just to build on what Aaron was explaining about the integration of the emergency program into this build, the emergency program already is embedded within the fire department. And, you know, in most small communities in B C, the fire department is actually tasked with leading responses to all types of different emergencies. So that co-location within this new facility really makes a lot of sense, supporting and coordinating operations, being close to where one of the lead agencies actually is based. And the other reason for including the emergency operations and emergency program in this build was that, as Aaron said, it's getting us out of the floodplain. It's, you know, managing that risk in terms of having a facility that we can respond from and provide, you know, business continuity into the recovery process as well for a major emergency. I just want to discuss a little bit about, for the design considerations, the architecture of the emergency program. It's really made up of volunteer groups here in our community. So we have the two search and rescue groups, marine and ground search and rescue. marine and ground search and rescue. We have an emergency communications team, which manages all of our radio communications, shooting cell phones, other units of communication field. We also have the emergency support services team, or ESS team, which supports evacuees, everything from small house fires to, you know, a major evacuation event of a fire or wildfire. We actually have two staff volunteer groups as well. So we have staff here who are trained to stand at a reception center for evacuees. So Brennan Park, Tootum Hall, one of the schools, one of our reception centers. We also have a team of staff who are what we call our EOC core team. Those are the staff that are actually trained to get the EOC up and running when there's an emergency and to staff that facility throughout the emergency and recovery period. So all of those needs of those volunteer groups are really taken into consideration when we're looking at the design process to try to integrate those as much as possible so we could have better response and better recovery. When we look at the uses for the emergency program and the EOC within this facility, we can kind of break it down into two different temporal contexts. So there's the day-to-day needs, which is really about meeting and training space for those volunteer groups. And then, you know, storage, staging of supplies, having those on hand and ready to go should there be an activation of the EOC. And that's really the other context that we talked about with the EOC is in an emergency, you know, having it ready to go to be able to support and coordinate operations. So when we looked at the integration of those different emergency volunteer groups and staff groups into the facility, there were a few that were easily accommodated because really they only needed meeting and training space. So our emergency communications team, for example, or the emergency support services team, you know, they're meeting on a monthly basis. It's kind of minimal impact to the facility. And also, you know, the volunteer firefighters will be also using that. So in terms of coordinating all of that space use, that's relatively easy to consider, including. For the search and rescue groups, for ground and marine, we also looked at if there was feasibility in including them as well in the build for efficiency. It doesn't look like that'll be possible just because of where the budget's at right now and also just the space constraints of the site. You're talking about providing space for a number of extra vehicles and equipment. It just doesn't look like it's going to fit. Can you move on to the next slide? For the actual spaces for the EOC, I just really want to underline what both Stuart and Aaron were saying in that all of the EOC spaces are multipurpose spaces. It's a little bit different than what we have right now. Where our current EOC over at the RCMP building, it does get used for meetings time to time. But it was built as sort of a standalone facility without the intention of it being used for other things. With this build, I think what we're really trying to move towards is having spaces that are used on a regular basis so that those systems are getting tested so that in an emergency, we know they're ready to go and that, you know, if there's any issues, that those are caught very quickly because people are in there on a daily basis. It also means that people are familiar with those spaces as well beforehand. So that's really, really helps in terms of being ready for response. The main spaces we considered were an office for the emergency program coordinator plus an extra workstation for other staff or for volunteers who might be working on projects. The main EOC space, which is really where the operations and planning sections would go for the EOC, that's actually the same room as the fire hall training facility. So that's the co-location there. It's the sort of large training room space. Off of that EOC space, we would like to see included is a communications room. It should be for our radio setup. So something that's on the exterior of the building so that we can do external cabling, to have the communication set up. And to be able to have it closed off so that, you know, for any radio communications in emergency that they can get on with communicating with other sites that are coordinating on support. We also, for the EOC planning and design, looked at different breakout rooms for the different aspects of the EOC response. So again, these would be already offices that are in use for other purposes on a day-to-day basis that would be taken over during response as needed to house different staff for the EOC. And that includes also this second meeting room space that Aaron mentioned, where an EOC director could go to have more private meetings with the different heads of different sections of the EOC or for the policy group to be close to the EOC that they're getting regular updates or for media briefing. There's a number of different functions that could be used for that second meeting space. Storage was also considered for IT equipment, stationary communications equipment. We built that into the design process. As well as security and access considerations because, you know, in an EOC activation, we don't want just anybody being able to access the building. We don't want reporters being able to just walk in. There's a lot of confidential information within the EOC environment. So we looked at different access considerations for that, you know, just to be able to manage who was coming in and out. And then really some of the concepts that were underlying the design was looking at how we can make this building appropriate for a post-disaster scenario. So building in resiliency wherever we could. So looking at having water stored on-site, having backup power systems. We actually have a backup of a backup sort of plan in terms of we'd have emergency generators but then also the possibility to bring in external generators if it was necessary if those failed. Fuel, we looked at having a fuel tank on-site. We visited the Boundary Bay Fire Department where they have quite a good setup in terms of emergency fuel supply. Their tank actually is used on a day-to-day basis to fuel their fire trucks and other emergency vehicles. But it only goes down to a certain level before it cuts off fuel distribution and maintains that reserve to be able to run the facility. And then, you know, just really ensuring that there was that post-disaster survivability of the building. The timeframe that they use in the lower mainland is about 72 hours in terms of having all of those systems up and running. I think for here in Squamish, we have a little bit of a different context. We're a little bit more cut off from support from other municipalities. So we looked at a one-week planning horizon for some of those extra contingencies. Let's all head back to Jonathan.
Rebecca. Hi, everyone. So I'm here to talk to you about the sustainable design approach and our recommended targets moving forward. And I thought I'd start with a quick refresh. I think you met my colleague Jason a couple of weeks ago and he kind of gave you a big contextual outline and some clarified some of the challenges that we're having right now with respect to definition around code and new tools in the marketplace and kind of how we're understanding that with respect to the climate emergency and what we want to do with this building and sort of the ecosystem of infrastructure in Squamish in the future. So just to recap where we're starting from, you probably remember the slide. This is where we're trying to get to. So we're really trying to connect what we're doing with this building with the declaration, the climate emergency declaration that Squamish has made so that we're using the right long-term target to make our decisions on design. You probably remember this too. Energy and carbon are not the same. So I know Jason presented some of the challenges with the B.C. step code and the typology that we're working with in the fire hall and how those things really don't go together because the step code is not, or fire halls are not defined in the step code in terms of specific energy targets. And that step code doesn't have a carbon target. So what we're trying to do is kind of align our approach with low-carbon buildings as well as low-energy buildings and really understand what the, how we can create targets to move our design forward to meet those. Remembering that carbon is really going to come from fuel switching. So getting to an electric system, an all-electric system is going to give us the best chance. So we can still have a low-energy building but not necessarily a low-carbon building if we don't think about moving away from gas to electricity. And that's really to the benefit of our grid, which is very clean in B.C. Again, just a reminder, thinking about how this particular project is going to fit into the ecosystem of infrastructure within Squamish and for the district in the future. So every building is unique. The context and the location that it has and the opportunities and the potential that every site has is going to be different to meet some of the targets and the opportunities of each building. A reminder that we want to think of everything in context as well. That carbon really isn't the only thing that we're wanting to address around sustainability. And there's a lot of nuance within the built environment that also is attached to carbon. So it's not just operational energy. I know that the district is also starting to be very concerned around embodied energy. There's also a carbon story attached to, of course, the biosphere and the ecosystem. So we want to consider those things as well. We'll give you a recommendation around that. You probably, we had a chat, I think, around the complexity of some of the rating systems and tools in the marketplace that are creating a little bit of challenge around what to use and what's the right choice for different types of buildings in different places. None of these are bad. There's just that we need to think clearly about what's right for each project. And really remembering that a carbon and energy target is really only targeting carbon and energy and not all the other components of responsible building and, you know, essentially development that we want to make. So a reminder, we want to make sure that this project is attacking all of these different places and spaces and categories across construction. So where we've been to date. We, I think we also had a, you had a, a part of the presentation from Jason took you through our typical approach. So the idea to get us to where we want to go is we start with reducing as much as possible. So that's reducing our demand. So if we can reduce first, then we don't have to provide as many active systems. We don't have to use as much energy or as many resources to serve our spaces. So reduce first, then we want to optimize. And then if we have, if we need to, we can generate renewable energy on-site. So that's the approach we've taken. That necessitates a bit of a shift in the design approach. So thinking about passive strategies first, then active systems. So passive really helps us think about reducing that demand. Then adding active systems and making sure those are really efficient. And then thinking about renewable strategies and doing that with respect to thinking really, really clearly about how that space is going to be used so that when it's occupied and you've got all your program that you need, everybody kind of understands how they're going to interact with that building as well. So where we've been, what we've, what we started with to help us get to a target where we think we want to be was essentially benchmarking existing fire halls in similar climates to see where we think we can get to and what those design, looking at what those other design criteria were and what those systems were. So essentially, we created, working alongside our mechanical and electrical consultant, we looked at what a building that would meet B.C. building code now with a little bit of a buffer, so probably 10% better than code, and an all-electric system might look like and where that might get us in terms of an energy target and a carbon target. Then we created an improved scenario. So we looked at what a carbon-neutral-ready scenario might look like. So it had a more efficient HVAC system, improved envelope. We added an air tightness target and looked at what those outcomes might be. So what would total energy use and what would a GHGI look like? And then to move even a little bit more from there, we just improved an air tightness target. So we put this up in a really lovely table for you. I'm going to take you through it really quickly. So base case, all-electric system. So you're still going to be, you're still going to have a fairly low carbon output from an all-electric system. So air-source heat pumps, water-to-water for heat and chilled water distribution with electric boiler backup. When you go to the carbon-neutral-ready scenario on the mechanical side, a more efficient system. So still heat pumps, water-to-water this time, which is more efficient. And we're looking at the closed-loop ground source-to-exchange system. And then the carbon-neutral scenario C there, it's exactly the same mechanical system. So then we looked at what would our envelope look like in each of these scenarios. So at the base case, this is your wall, roof, and floor R-values. So you can see the R-values for wall, roof, and floor are just getting a little bit, are improved quite a bit from base scenario A to the carbon-neutral-ready scenario B, but don't change at all for carbon-neutral C. For window-to-wall ratio and our glazing, so our envelope with respect to glass, so we're 36% in the base case. We moved down to 26% for B and C. And again, no improvement between B and C for glazing and window-to-wall ratio, but quite a bit of improvement from the base case. Where we do start to see a change is in air tightness. So no minimum requirement for air tightness in the base case. 1.0 for carbon-neutral-ready and improved to 0.6 in carbon-neutral. And that gets us these targets, these performance targets. So we're looking at about approximately 130 kilowatt-hours per meter square per year for a total energy performance in the base case, which will get you a GHGI of around 2, which is not bad. But if we see, if we go to scenario B, the carbon-neutral-ready, we're seeing a significant improvement in your energy use, which will give you around the same GHGI for both B and C and a bit more improved on scenario C. So what we've, what we're recommending is essentially creating scenario B, so a carbon-neutral-ready scenario, as our target as we move through design development. Along with, going back to our reminder from before that we want to make sure that we're being holistic about this approach. And so what's really helpful as we move through our design is being able to consider all the other components that matter with respect to the quality of the interior space, the site, and how that's connecting to the rest of the community with some measurable benchmarks and some measurable thresholds for what is good performance. And we think that LEED is really the right answer for this particular project. We did a really quick analysis with respect to where we think we can land within the LEED version 4 scorecard. And it looks like we can get to around a 64-point mark, which would get us into a comfortable goal. This, keep in mind, is before we have a building. But based on generally what we know about the location, which, this particular location is not going to score that well. It's not particularly dense. It doesn't have a lot of amenities around it. It's not particularly transit-served. However, where the project can score very well is certainly on the energy side and on materials and indoor quality. So we can kind of make up the difference there and still score very well. And I think this is a really, you know, the LEED program offers a lot of improved practices that we can draw from to guide our design decisions along with the carbon and energy target that we just talked about with benchmark. So this is our recommendation. Moving forward with the carbon-neutral-ready plus a LEED gold scenario. And our next steps would be to, as design is moving forward, start to get some specificity and some clarity around the energy, the details of the energy design. So we've benchmarked and we have a goal, but now we have to go, as we move forward with design, really understand what that means with respect to the building that emerges. So doing some preliminary modeling, creating an energy pie, understanding where our loads are and using that to refine our design decisions. So.
Brings us back to our recommendations, which I'm not going to repeat because it's too weird. And this brings us to the end of the presentation. So questions, please.
Thank you. The recommendation has a focus on building sustainability performance. We will have another presentation in January following some more detailed cost and design work. However, I wondered if there are any questions not relating to that specific topic of building sustainability performance for our guests?
I do have one.
Mary Ellen.
So you talked a bit about future proofing this building. And I'm wondering if you can talk to what is talk to what is future-proofed about it?
Maybe Aaron will start, and then we can go on to it.
Yeah, we've considered how the department may adapt in the future, and we've put a lot of that into the building as far as an additional office space, so when we do transition or get larger, we don't have to necessarily build onto the fire hall or more.
I heard that part, I guess I'm wondering, can we build onto it? Are we building it in a way that, I noticed there was a little bit out the back, that potentially is buildable, or would we build on top of where the dormitory would go, but leave the other rest of the route for solar panels? Like, I'm just, how big can we get there?
Right, we have looked at with the architect as far as if we do need additional dorms, there is a deck space that could be built, the dorms could be built on that deck space, so it will be engineered to be able to increase the size if needed. As far as the drive-through bays, we, currently we have four drive-through bays slotted where that hall, so one of them will be used for frontline apparatus right off the start, but it will be supplemented in the future with frontline apparatus, will be secondary apparatus in the future, so that is some of the future.
And then, how do we, how do we build fire halls now that are gender-neutral in terms of dorms and washing facilities and all those sorts of things? Like, what are the best practices that we put into this as we try and recruit more women and other genders into the fire?
Sure, maybe yes, sir. In fact, all of the current halls that we're doing address that issue very specifically. It's very much front and center in terms of thinking. So in order to do that, you provide unisex facilities, the ability to not, to have individual dorm rooms and shared dorm rooms anymore. So there's some flexibility about how male and female distribution can occur within the building, not only now, but over time. So in the old days, when there used to be single-sex large gaming showers and large dorms where they were all shared, those days are gone, we're into single occupancy, both wash facilities and sleep facilities.
Thank you.
Counsel Reese.
Thank you. And it was around the building, level of building sustainability, which I understand, staff, maybe just to be clear, it's in the recommendation, but is staff looking for a direction today, or is that something that we look for after you came to us in more detail?
Yeah, through the chair, you know, I think we're looking for input today on whether these, any of these kind of jump out at you or you're interested in. We are currently working through some costing exercises on all three of these, so we do have a better idea come January 14th. But certainly, if there's any specific direction or non-direction that you'd like to, let us know now.
Well, for me, I mean, it's between A and B, I think, at this point. C is aspirational, but I'm a little bit nervous about the cost at this point with all the other costs. So it's the difference between A and B, and it's just a rough idea of the cost difference.
Sure.
Which I think, for me at least, is part of the decision.
Yep, we'll do our best to refine that, yeah.
You don't have any idea about today, or?
Yeah, a rough idea, but I'd rather we finish this exercise and then, yeah, discuss in January.
Counsel Pittman.
Yeah, so a few things, I mean, we need to get cut off at some point. I want to just challenge the idea of the drive-through a little bit, just with today's vehicles, I can understand the appeal of that, but when, you know, we have a growing number of vehicles that can drive and park themselves, I think personally, like five years away from electric fire trucks, maybe it's 10, but to me, the needs you cited for a drive-through, the apparatus themselves will solve that problem, which then makes me wonder, okay, so if we just stuck with what we have now, which we've been able to accommodate despite its challenges for, you know, a few, few more years, then I would presume the building would be more efficient if there was only, you know, doors on one side. We'd have a lot more space to build a bigger building now or in the future. And, and so with the thought to self-driving vehicles, electric vehicles and so on, I wonder, you know, it just makes me wonder if single doors actually are the better option, thinking five, 10 years and further.
If I can speak to that, sure. A lot of the fire hall flow with the decontamination is, if you drive around to the back of the building, you decon a lot of the equipment and apparatus and gear out the back, you drive through the hall and you transition to a clean area. So it's, number one, it's reducing the amount of backing up that you're doing with vehicles. There's people moving about, trying to get the truck back in service and backing vehicles up is kind of a dangerous proposition. But a lot of it is to do with the decon of the equipment. Having that drive-through, the ability to have a drive-through area so the clean is out the front, dirty is out the back, so we can reload hose and stuff into a clean environment instead of in a dirty environment, really helps to stop that transition of toxins from everything that we've deconed from creeping in and through the building.
So a couple of things, just, I just, since we have you here, because we've talked a few times about ecosystems, and I just wanted to clarify, because there's been a few discussions about that. I mean, in my mind, if you have a number of buildings in an ecosystem, if some can't produce energy, then others can make up the slack. So as an ecosystem, you know, the ecosystem doesn't require an energy input in theory. But if, if there's, unless you have a building that's able to actively sequester carbon on a long, well basis, if there's any building in your ecosystem that is not zero emissions, the ecosystem is not going to be zero emissions. Like, without an active sequestration building, that piece, the ecosystem will deal with. Is that accurate?
Well, what, clarify for me what you mean by sequestering, like?
Well, able to, so if you have a building that, that is for whatever reason burning gas or something, another building in the ecosystem can't bring those emissions down.
Right.
Unless it's.
You're off, yeah. So you're basically offsetting the emissions by generating clean renewable energy from another building in the ecosystem. So I didn't do a very good job of explaining the difference between scenario B and C, but essentially, it's, scenario C simply allows for the building to generate enough renewable energy onsite to neutralize the small amount of emissions that would be generated because our grid has a tiny amount of emissions on it. So the carbon neutral ready scenario, we think we have the energy footprint low enough that you could potentially, in the future, fit the fire hall itself with some PV to generate a portion of that, but then potentially make that up, the remaining portion in another place in the district, if people are generating renewable energy in another place, whether it's another building or a fuel, fuel-generated installation of some sort.
Quick. Yeah, a final, just a final thing, because we've talked about standards a few times, and I think my perspective on this has shifted, so I just wanted to clarify from my perspective that I'm not so worried about which code, whether it's LEED or STEP or something like that, I'm more focused on, is it a zero emissions building, and that's sort of for immediate and long-term carbon footprint? And then what is the energy requirement of the building, which is more, I see as a formability thing? And so those are the two pieces, rather than a specific standard, I'm thinking about personally.
Counsel French.
Thank you. I'm interested to know, is your firm involved in demolition in any way of the existing building?
Well, I can answer it. Through the mayor, we hired a construction manager, committed construction. They will be leading the process of the decommission and obviously the construction of the new building. We haven't established who or how that's going to happen, you know, there may be some input from the architects, but they're certainly not going to be responsible for it directly.
Okay, great. And the mayor was asking earlier about future-proofing, and I want to follow up a little bit on that. Where I thought we were going with that conversation is if there was a desire at some point in the future to add a third floor above the two that would be existing, would the building be engineered to make, for that to be possible?
Sure, sir, I'll start with Stuart, maybe if you want to jump in. So maybe just follow up, first of all, on Aaron's comment, is that the fire department thinks, look at their long-term staffing needs and, and how we're designing it is do it to accommodate that in the future, that's part of the dorm rooms, that's part of the office. Also, my understanding is, you know, fire halls need to be close to where the development is, so, you know, if more development happens wherever, then there, there's another fire hall somewhere else that's not necessarily happening right there. And maybe transition to Stuart, there is a lot of, this is a very sophisticated system, especially you're trying to get a very kind of high-value envelope to tack on components onto the building can be very difficult. And again, I'd argue that it's, we've kind of looked at the future need, and there's, the future need, at least for the fire staff, we don't see it. Stuart.
So it's a really good question. I think what I would say is that, the way to think about it is, we could certainly accommodate within the building structure to add to it, add a third floor. The reality of that, though, is very different. And the implications are that the foundation design and the structure would have to be able to support that. We know that the ground conditions up there are not ideal, we're actually trying to limit the weight of the building, so we're certainly looking at wood options for exactly that reason. By adding additional stories, we are going to be challenged potentially with that. The other thing to think about, and it picks up on Jesse's point, is that we want a certain level of future-proofing at that location, but typically what we see in municipalities is their growth is accommodated by additional fire halls, not by just making existing fire halls larger. That doesn't go on. What you would typically see in a community is a redistribution of the response time from halls, and as the community grows, you actually create an additional hall, not expand the existing one. So the future-proofing is really around the ability to add an additional crew on demand in that hall, and we've certainly allowed for that. The additional bays, for example, allow additional active vehicles to be put into service, and then the space would accommodate an additional service group. And the, what we're currently looking at often in many halls is that ambition is usually driven by dorm room requirements. The kitchen doesn't get any bigger, the dayrooms don't get bigger, the actual suppression functions don't get bigger, but what changes is the dorm room functions, which is, to Aaron's point, we've made an allowance for growth in that area.
I'm quite concerned about the removal of parking with the creation of the temporary hall. When I drive by that location on any given day, any given time, that parking is full, and it's very difficult to find a spot. So I, I'm hoping that part of your conversation with Vancouver Coastal Health is some mitigation strategy for that parking.
Through the chair, yeah, definitely, we'll, we'll create parking in lieu for the site that we'll take.
Counsel Doran.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm curious if you can speak a little bit more to the air to water versus water to water heat exchange options, and if we have any experience in the district in terms of using those two different systems?
I can't speak to the experience in the district, but essentially, air to water is less efficient than water to water, so energy is carried more efficiently in water, so that's why it gets more efficient, and we also combine that with ground source, so that the temperatures are more, more consistent when we're moving the water between the ground and the heat pump. So that, that's where you get your efficiency from, and that is a very simplified description of the pump's technology.
There are two things that John brought in. One was that I heard something that came out of our climate leadership team meeting that suggested that air to water is not very efficient at the moment in terms of experience in Squamish, and so that was just something that had been reported back to me, so something to consider. And then also in our current budget, because we're just looking at it today, is that we are allocating money to account for the iron deposits in the RCMP buildings, water, heat pump exchange. So those are components that, as we look into kind of those costings, might be worth keeping in mind. And then my other question was around really the need and the rationale behind the suggestion for moving towards LEED, and I appreciate that it is very much kind of one of the leading certifications, not unintended, but it also, even just your explanation of it, very much appreciate that building form is only one component of sustainability, but also the things that you spoke about in terms of, this isn't a very walkable space, don't necessarily really apply to the scenario that we're looking at. It's a fire hall. So yes, I fully agree that those are appropriate in other circumstances, and so I'm wondering if we weigh the option of developing kind of just basic minimum energy standards that we would accept as a municipality for these sorts of buildings and the potential costs of doing that.
Yeah, that's entirely at counsel's discretion. I think you're right, that, that given the specific needs of this project, what are, what are the priorities for counsel? And it would be totally legitimate for you to say, we want you to focus on these specific needs, energy and carbon, and that we're willing to give up on some of those broadest sustainable issues. We would love you to pursue the broadest mandate, but we are going to reach a moment when the budget will decide some of these decisions. And so when we come back in January, we're going to fill in that detail for you to allow you to make those decisions more effectively.
I'm going to make a plug, though. Because I have to. I think the value of rating systems really lies in accountability. So, I mean, that's why we use them, is to identify a goal, create a mechanism to measure them, and to hold us accountable by a third party that is disinterested, not us, not you, right? So, and, and those work. If we want to learn how to do this better, which we all do, we have to measure what we do, and we have to be able to get that information and feed it back. And what LEED does is, it kind of sets the baseline for that, so things like, you have to commission your building, you will want to do that, it makes you do that. Metering, basic stuff that in the future, if we're thinking about a future-proofed building here, if you want to learn something, if we want to learn something about what we're doing, these are the components that are necessary, and the program provides a very clear, clean map to, to do that. So, and I think, you know, no matter what you do, the, the building is going to be able to score fairly well. And what I like about LEED, to address your comment about the location at the sort of floorboard around location and other components of, you know, sustainable community development, is there's a lot of nuance associated with carbon and energy that also live within the rating system. So the carbon story lives in our soils, the carbon story lives in the biosphere, the carbon story lives in how we move water. And that all is part of the tools that reside within LEED, something that we're all very familiar with, and we, it, it gives us a way to be accountable for that, so, can I be done?
Counsel Reese.
Thank you. And it was part of my question, well, future-proofing has been answered, I think, but I wasn't thinking of a third story, I was thinking about the equipment bays, which, I think there's about four on them there, and will that handle the equipment in the future? For example, and I take the point that, you know, you get to a certain number, and then you build another fire hall, and I can see that happening in Squamish. But this hall will service the downtown area, where probably the highest buildings will be, for example. So, you know, in the future, might we go to longer trucks, for example, with longer ladders and, or bigger equipment, or something like that? Is the building designed to handle what you might see coming down the road as a firefighter?
Right, yes, if I can speak to that. Currently, we have a hundred-foot ladder for aerial apparatus, the city day convert has around the same. So after a certain height, six stories, they, they build it into the buildings where you don't need the hundred or two-hundred-foot ladder. They're very rare to buy one, and they're not necessary, so they actually build the building better out of concrete and/or non-compatible materials, so you don't actually need the truck to actually reach the top of the building at that point. So we have taken that into account, we most likely will be moving the aerial apparatus down to this hall. We most likely will be moving the aerial apparatus down to its hall, in the hall it's sized to account for that.
Me, early, then I'll go to the department.
So I was noticing in one of the charts that pursuing the LEED certification sort of adds a hundred to $200,000 to our costs. Is that right?
Well, yes and no. I mean, so that was the numbers to account for, I think that was the consulting costs. Depending on, it depends on what you're comparing that to in base case. So if you're going to commission the building anyway, which we hope you'll do, then a portion of that is removed from that one to $200,000. You're doing some energy modeling, and you're doing some of those services without pursuing LEED, then that is removed from that cost. So that's a very crude, generally, this is what it costs to support a LEED program for soft costs. But it's really hard to know without knowing what the other side of it is, what the quote-unquote increase or premium would be. So please kind of understand how those were generated. I think it's not necessarily true that it's an add of $100,000 to $200,000, but that is what it costs to support in general the soft costs of the program going forward.
Okay, and then under scenario C, the carbon neutral one, can you explain the sentence around the current carbon offsets offered by gold standard program? I just don't understand how that all works.
Yeah.
Who's paying for it and buying it?
So the performance scenarios were generated to inform costing, and so to get to the carbon neutral scenario, we had to provide some kind of direction in terms of what that neutrality, what that difference between the carbon neutral ready and the actual neutral scenario would mean in terms of cost. So to clarify again, the carbon neutral ready is to get the energy consumption down to a point where we think we could potentially generate up to 5% or a minimum of 5% of the electrical demand onsite, either now or in the future. And that would offset the small amount of carbon that our grid currently generates. And that's just based on the zero-carbon building programs, definition of how much we would need to offset. You could offset that in a different way if you wanted to define that in a different way, and so we provided a cost for the gold standard offset purchase if that were to be the way that you would choose to neutralize those emissions. Gold standard is the definition of the most verifiable carbon offset that you could purchase in the market. We wouldn't recommend something that wasn't gold standard.
Right. Okay. And then will we see operating costs on this comes back in January, estimated operating costs?
Through the chair. It's going to be hard to really, we haven't got their conceptual design still, so, you know, as we move forward with design and mechanical systems, we'll have better information about that, but it's going to be really challenging to provide any decent numbers by January.
Counselor Herford.
Thank you. In concept, I'm supportive of that option. Option could be this carbon neutral ready would be a great place, I think this building would be. And if that's where I'm going to see this get to, so how inspirational that is, we'll see how we get there. I'll just, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just, and I'm happy with the proposed sort of building. I'm a little concerned about the temporary, actually more than a little concerned about temporary structure. And as much as we're going to, you know, have answered, provide some parking, we can just, you know, it's right there, but that area has a huge crunch of parking, so at our hospital, and I'd really like to see the next, next time we're here, some more information about details.
Sure.
So I can feel comfortable.
Yeah, no problem.
I'd like to speak myself at this time on the temporary fire hall site, and then we'll come back and wrap up with our recommendation on the building sustainability topic. So you've got the Guilford and Clark illustration there. My question will be what kind of public engagement we will entertain on the topic of this proposal? There's probably about 1,200 households that use that intersection, including my own, and that intersection and the Clark Drive Highway 99 intersection have been, had extensive community dialogue around, prompted by the Scott Crescent development a few years ago. That dialogue has continued, and there's suggestions such as, and I'm focusing on safety here, I believe that this can work for a two-year period. I think we can make it work, and I think we can make parking work, is my own perspective, but I'm concerned about safety. And many residents of the area who use this intersection have been, come to the view that a roundabout should be entertained in the longer term. The issue with safety is visibility, and when the pressure-reducing valve building was put in place about four or five years ago, and the advertisement in the paper talked about a PRV station, anybody have any comments on this? And nobody knew what a PRV station was, and if they did, I think you'd have many residents come out and say that that would be a wrong place to put a building like that because of the obstruction of visibility. This is a serious concern at this intersection, and I would say that our use of it has benefited from the current lower speed limits. We're now at 30K on Clark Drive here, and that has been a benefit. However, I think that that's the primary consideration with the temporary use here. I think the other issues of this site are manageable for the short term. I'm going to go to Counselor Pennigill and then Counselor Stoner for some wrap-up comments or questions on the building sustainability theme, and then we'll end up on that one, on the recommendation, unless there's...
So I'm generally supportive of option B at this point, if I mentioned, I just, if I could get a bit of clarity on the difference between B and C. Like is C, it's just adds the panels or the windmills, but all the conduit and stuff is there? Or is there sort of in going from option B to option C at a later date, there's a little more, like there's inverters, there's conduit, there's maybe some smaller structural changes to get through option C or?
So we haven't got to that much detail, so on that table that I think we have a report, but also if you want to just drop the one that has the whole one back up there, the difference between B and C is just simply that airtightness. So all we know right now is that we're getting to a little bit more of an efficient building, so energy use is just a little bit lower. So when we get to C, and this is just based on generalization, general calculations, we think we would have enough roof area in total if we wanted to generate enough electricity through PV to offset that, to get to that 5% to neutralize, then you could do it if you were down at the 100 kilo mark. So that, it just essentially is a little bit more efficient envelope so that you can get lower. The nuances and the detail of the mechanical system and the electrical system, we don't know yet. So, I don't know if that helps, the answers.
So I would still stick to B then, hearing that, and I just throw in one added thing. I am skeptical about using purchasing offsets as a path to neutrality in general. I also expect that PV sales will improve greatly in ten years.
I don't think, it's not a recommendation, I don't think, to purchase, it just allows you to understand what the cost comparison could be.
Counselor Stoner.
So my question isn't actually on the sustainability front, but more so appreciate the amount of effort that went into finding space efficiencies, I think, that I think a few times. But I'm just curious how far we push that from like the best-case scenario, like where we started of like, if we were just dream thinking, to where we landed in this concept of kind of future-proofing? Like how far did we have to scale back?
Through the chair, I don't know if I have a great answer for you, but certainly what it was, there was a lot of hand wringing and general angst. We certainly, for example, office sizes, we got down, we really looked hard at the meeting spaces, so we certainly went literally room by room by room and did it for everything. Yeah, we certainly did our best. There is an attached spreadsheet to the presentation, you can look through it, answering specific questions, but we certainly did our best.
Just want to ensure that where we're at is really going to get us through into what it is that we need. And I know that there, obviously, there's this big elephant room and how much this is going to cost, and we're over budget already, but we're going down this road, so how, like, just want to temperature check some stuff that we're okay with where we're at with the efficiencies that we can.
Through the chair, in my perspective is where we have an industry-standard functional building, if we start decreasing the sizes, the building becomes less functional. So, you know, that's council's decision, but that's my feeling, is it will start losing functionality and future-proofing.
You were talking about increase.
I was talking about going the other way, in terms of increase. I just want to make sure that stuff hasn't scaled back too much in the future-proofing.
Through the chair, I just want to clarify from Aaron's, to supply his view on this, but there is a functional minimum that is there and clearly there. If we start to erode that, that actually creates a huge problem. So we have not got, we haven't cut it back that far, which is good. So then the spaces that remain that can actually create some efficiency came out of more about looking at shared use, looking at ways of not creating a separate independent EOC that sits there for 99% of the year and does nothing, that we use it for training and we use it. So the efficiencies really came about really questioning how we use it day-to-day, and viewing the EOC function as when you hit that event, then this building changes, the life of this building changes from a daily operational fire venue to an EOC venue, and therefore it just flips its character. Beyond that, I'm confident that the areas that we got are actually in the right place, honestly. And I don't know, Aaron, whether you have anything to add, but I think at this point, there's not a huge benefit in increasing it at this point.
Yeah, we've also, me and HCMA and the previous architect that did the needs assessment, and really looked at other fire halls, we've done hall tours and seen how those halls function and the functional spaces within those halls, and they are very comparable.
So we have a recommendation before us, and three options have been presented. Would anybody wish to make a recommend, or speak to a recommendation or make a motion regarding selection of these options? Counselor Herford.
Okay, I'll make the recommendation with performance target as option B.
Second.
Second by Mayor Elliott. Discussion. Counselor Reese.
Yeah, I can support that subject, too. The financial information is going to probably still, the tracheal nerves, but generally, I think that is the right way to go, absolutely.
Counselor French.
I too support the motion and want to highlight the fact that, in my opinion, the building we're taking down is not even close to the end of its life, so I want to make sure that the decisions we make are not going to leave us in a situation 20 years from now where we're tearing this building down because we made poor choices at this table or the next time we have this conversation.
Counselor.
As I said, I will support this, I just want to add in, you know, the LEED part, I can support that piece, too. I understand your suggestion about why it's valuable, I just would like to make sure that we focus on the values and benefits of going through LEED as opposed to the LEED certification in and of itself.
Counselor Stoner.
I'd be the recommendation that's up, and the general direction of option B, but I am looking forward to the costing component, and in particular, the component of potentially putting PV's solar photovoltaic on there to start with. I think that that's one piece, that if we talk about where in our ecosystem we need to be generating energy, I think of that as a, if an emergency happens, that building needs to be generating energy in the long term so that it can be sufficient. So I'd like to see what that cost model looks like.
As for my own thoughts, I will also be supporting the option B. Further thoughts, though, as I reflect on other municipal building projects in recent years, it seems to me that two themes pop out for me in hindsight. There wasn't enough resiliency broadly conceived in the design and construction of several of these buildings, and the programming flexibility was another issue in hindsight as we look at some of these buildings, I won't name them, that we've learned some hard lessons. Another lesson that we've learned with at least one prominent local building is overemphasis on the LEED certification, or it could be any other certification, which resulted in very substantial costs and hardship for the building sponsors. So I would like to suggest that with option B, and we're going to have some cost information come back and some further design information, that for me, the resiliency and programming flexibility, and I'd just like to also say that I think you've done tremendous work already on those themes, and your illustrations and presentation are very interesting and clear on those topics, and I'll leave it at that. Shall we call for a vote on option B with the consideration that we're going to attend to some cost, further cost information in January? All in favor? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes, we're now going to need to call for a motion to close.
Motion to terminate.
To terminate?
Yeah, we have to go back into the special meeting.
Oh, okay. Move to terminate.
Okay, move to terminate. Second, Counselor Stoner, all in favor? Thank you.